I would like to call to order the March 7, 2017, meeting of the Riverton City Finance Committee at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Ma'am, consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $112,429.27. Checks written for payroll liabilities for 2/17/17 in the amount of $290,345.52. Manual checks in the amount of $42,285.29 for a total of $445,060.8.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion passes. And, you guys have any further business?
Madam Chairwoman, the only business we have is in front of you tonight is the budget calendar. And it's a little bit different this year than it has been in the past. And I think what we're asking is maybe a little bit more involvement from the Finance Committee because of the capital projects and knowing the cash business. I think it's important to have your expertise and your guidance and your eyes on it. So, there may be changes if we get down the road and we have a few stumbling blocks. But, we've added a couple of things this year that I think you're going to be pleased with and happy to be involved in. So if you just keep track of that, or we can send out reminders as well.
Are these the dates that you would like us to be present for something, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so for instance, if you see Finance Committee on there, those are the times that we would like you to attend.
Okay.
If it's at all possible.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, then, meeting is adjourned.
I now call the March 7, 2017, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7 PM. And, this evening we'll have a pledge of allegiance and flag ceremony presented to us by the Girl Scout Troop 1126.
Color Guard, attention. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, post your colors. Color Guard, salute. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in the Girl Scout promise. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law. Color Guard, retreat.
Thank you, girls. We appreciate you coming tonight. If they could remain standing, I'll offer an invocation. Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful that we have an opportunity here on the City Council to serve the citizens of Riverton. And we pray that this evening we'll have insight and understanding equal to our assignments, that we might be able to administer the needs of the people who live in our community and that we'll be able to find common ground with them and amongst ourselves. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to serve and ask for thy blessings on this meeting in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please call a roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Larson this evening.
Your Honor, I would move that we excuse Councilmember Kyle Larson from this evening's meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I declare that we do have a quorum. Kyle called me here an hour or so ago, and he's in Salt Lake. It took him nine hours to get there, and so, that's not exactly how he planned his day. But, he's... So, we do have some weather between here and there. So, the Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
Your Honor, make a motion. We approve. The agenda is written.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda, they'll be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves to the record. Okay. The consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, February 21, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, February 21, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, February 23, 2017, special meeting. Approval of the minutes, February 23, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, February 28, 2017, special meeting. Approval of the minutes for March 7, 2017, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for March 7, 2017. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for February 2017. Approval of the Wind River Tourist Association Joint Powers Agreement. And approval of ordinance number 17-002 on second reading, allowing ducks and city limits. And I'll read that ordinance by title only. Proposed ordinance number 17-002, an ordinance amending Title VI Animals, revising Chapter 6.04 Animals Generally. Section 6.04.030, pins, enclosures, etc. 6.04.035, keeping certain animals. And 6.04.045, noisy and nuisance animals, of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing out ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of $112,429.27. Checks written for payroll liabilities for 2/17/17 in the amount of $290,345.52. Manual checks in the amount of $42,285.29 for a total of $445,060.8.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the consent agenda. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item of business is the introduction of our interim city administrator and oath of office. I'll meet you at the podium, Courtney. So, I don't know if we can crowd this close enough that they can hear us out there, but we'll try it, okay? Yeah. Well, you can just repeat after me, if you're good at it, okay? Raise your right hand. Okay, I do solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
That I have not knowingly violated...
That I have not knowingly violated...
Any law related to my election or appointment...
Any law related to my election or appointment...
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge...
That I will discharge...
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you, Courtney. You bet. If there's anybody in the audience that doesn't know Courtney Bolander, who served us for nine years...
And a half.
And a half, as our, you know, finance...
Director of Administrative.
Director, administrative services and finance director, that's. We are truly, we're truly excited to have Courtney with us as our interim administrator at this time. Just reflecting that we are in a period of time here where we've lost, we've lost three, if you count Courtney, three of our senior staff. And we're coming into a budget time, and it's really pretty exciting that Courtney can come back and help us do that and help us kind of bump over this tough spot. So, it's great that we've got somebody coming in that's got so much experience with the city of Riverton and understands our process and things we've been doing. And you just have to acknowledge the work that Courtney's done for us in the past, where our audits have been clean and our organization has moved along smoothly. And we thank you for your past efforts, and we look forward to the next two or three months, Courtney.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item of business this evening is to talk about the Board of Appeals. We've got some appointments to make to that, and I think we'll have a report from the Community Development Director, Sandy.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Riverton is assisted by some citizens' advisory boards that help us with formulating some policy and procedures. And one of the boards that helps the Community Development Department is our Construction Board of Appeals. In the past, we did appoint members every year, and in about 2013, we changed that and established terms for all of our members. And this year, we did have four members that come due. Their term was up, and they all submitted letters and would like to continue. The Construction Board of Appeals is a little bit different because there are certain people that have to be appointed to that board. There needs to be one electrician, one plumber, one HVAC person, and those types of things, a designer, and so forth. And so, it is a little bit harder sometimes to find someone to fill those positions. I'm very happy that these four members did offer to re-up again for another four years. And there's a lot of experience there that helps us with our Construction Board of Appeals. They help us a lot when we do, when we review the new codes that come up, the International Code Council codes that we use to, through, in our building department. So, the ones that are, have come up are Terry Betts, Gary Burnett, John Dedmore, and Gary Fister. And they are the ones that we are requesting be reappointed tonight.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Gary Burnett, John Dedmore, Terry Betts, and Gary Fister to the Board of Appeals.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve Mr. Gary Burnett, John Dedmore, Terry Betts, and Gary Fister to the Board of Appeal appointments for their four years' term.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that?
Your Honor, I just had noticed in the staff report that it indicated Gary Burnett is the chairman, Terry Betts is the vice chairman. Are those appointments they will make, or do we need to appoint them specifically to those positions?
Okay, that was current, and those will possibly change when they go through elections during our next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, they'll pick their own leadership.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. And thanks, and thanks to the others as well. Mr. Dedmore, Mr. Betts, and Mr. Fister, who all make it work. Board of Appeals has significant impact in our community and grateful for their service. The next item...
Your Honor, we still need to vote.
Oh, hey, we didn't vote on that?
No.
I'm sorry. I'm, well, let's vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay, we did it. Thank you.
It was Mr. Peterson who was trying to get your attention.
Yeah, and I was just blabbing on. Okay, Resolution 1351, City Council Goals for 2017. So... We had a goal-setting session and talked about the things that we would like to see for the city of Riverton, and... And then, staff took all of that discussion that we had and put it into six bullet points that I hope express our intent. Have you all had an opportunity to look at that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's see. Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to adopt the Riverton City Council Goals for 2017.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt Resolution Number 1351. Second. Riverton City Council Goals. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on those?
Your Honor, I'm sorry to keep talking.
That's all right.
When, when we had discussed this, as I recall, I'm just looking at Exhibit A here, the actual goals and principles, we had discussed the idea of trying to have the goals have a lot more white space, so to speak, than what we have now.
Yes.
And I know we had discussed, you know, in particular, the goals that are indented just once being the main ideas, and I think when we had discussed it, we had specifically said the ones that are indented twice. For example, number two, continue beautification efforts to make the city attractive. We have three items under there. As I recall, we had said, we didn't want to be doing that. We wanted just to keep with very broad ideas for that.
Okay, so when we actually put this together, we need to drop off the third items. Okay, and so that we just keep, we just keep the general goals in front of us. Mike?
And, Your Honor, I would agree, and I think those are more tasks that start fulfilling the goals, and there may be more or less of those added as we go through the year.
Okay.
And so, I would agree with Mr. Hancock.
Okay, okay. Okay, so can we, when we, well, we'll work on this to get something that'll go on the front of the podium. The people in the audience don't get to see that, but the camera behind me, I think, shows that, that we have our city goals sitting right in front of us. So that we should be able to look at them and see whether or not we're fulfilling them as we, as we work around the table, if we don't get so used to seeing them there on the podium that we start to ignore them. So, okay, so we'll work on that so that they, it's a little easier to read. Maybe a little bigger font, too. Okay, all right, thank you. All right.
Your Honor, we still need to vote.
We still need to vote.
Yeah.
We still need to vote. Okay, so we've discussed it pretty good. All those in favor of adopting the Riverton City Council Goals for 2017?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Okay, Ordinance Number 17001, third and final reading, amending Title 15, Building Construction Maintenance Codes. Would the city clerk please read Ordinance 17-001 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. 17-001, an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings and Construction, revising Chapter 15.04, Building Construction and Maintenance Codes. Sections 15.04.010, Adoption, Applicability, Filing. And 15.04.040, Local Design Criteria and Loadings, of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-001 on third and final reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve Ordinance 17-001.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Your Honor, may I make a little statement?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, we passed this ordinance on first and second reading. As we were going through it, there was one little item we did have to change that just got neglected. And if you noticed down below, or just above alternatives, we did make a clarification on 4A, number four, to delete some words that said "prior to pressure testing of the replacement piping system." And those just had to be removed because the Board of Appeals actually voted to not require the pressure testing on the replacement of existing building sewer piping by the pipe bursting methods. It was just a phrase that got left in when we were amending our codes. And so, I just needed to bring that to your attention, that that was not voted on in the first two readings.
So, do you think we need to amend our motion? To include that, or is the title sufficient to cover that?
I wasn't sure, Your Honor, so I thought maybe we needed to get some clarification.
Is, Your Honor...
Mike?
I guess, as much as I hate to say it, I think this might start the process over again if we're making amendment on the third reading. I don't, I don't know the specific law behind that, but... And that is the idea, I guess, is to give the public three times to be able to see the changes in their entirety.
Well, and our opportunity to make adjustments if we need to.
Right, right. Do we have anybody in the room that would have an answer to that question, I guess?
I don't know that we do.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I believe that if you read the title as it was written, that you accepted the ordinance as written. So, it would be my recommendation that the motions stand as is.
Okay. I think, I think, I think using the title only, proposed ordinance by title only, filing local design criteria and loading, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for an effective date.
I think once we change the document, I think I agree with Mike. If we're changing the document... I don't know.
It's, see, I guess my concern is that if we change, if we've gone through here and made an adjustment on what we published, isn't that, shouldn't we make some kind of a... At least recognition of the fact that we've made that change?
Do we modify it and put it on the docket for the next meeting, for the third reading?
So...
Do we start the process all over again?
No, we don't have to start the process all over again. No, we can amend, we can amend the document every time we meet, okay? But, the idea is that, the idea is that we have an opportunity for input, and we slowly make the change instead of just, you know, jumping in and missing something like we've done here.
And, Your Honor, it was just a clarification because it was... And, Your Honor, it was just a clarification because it was in conflict with what we had in there. If we left that in, if that, just a little statement got left in, that just needed to be removed because later on it said that we deleted it.
Mike?
Your Honor, I would suggest that we have Lee, was it Lee that made, or I made the motion, I guess. I would amend the motion to add with the additional changes as stated. And then, I would suggest that we check with Mr. Solars and make sure that is acceptable. If not, we got to start over, but that wouldn't change what we're going to do tonight.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Courtney.
You could always table the motion and it'll go back right on the agenda next meeting. If you vote that motion down, then it's done. So, I would suggest that if you aren't sure whether you want to pass it tonight, then you could table it or you can amend it or you start over.
Your Honor.
Lee?
I think personally that, once you've read the title and we have the ordinance, any changes made, we can vote on the change right now and we don't have to have another amendment. We can vote on Third Reading for any changes that we make.
Yeah, I think we can. And that's, and that's the suggestion here. So, you made the motion to adopt the, according to my. I've got, I have, oh, I'm sorry, Mike made the motion. Okay, so, Mike wants to amend his motion and Holly was the second. Okay, do you, you accept the second?
Yes.
The change? Okay, so, so, we've, we've modified this motion a little bit to include that change on, on testing of wastewater system?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Oh, no, hey, it's a roll call. We got to do a roll call on it.
So, we approve the amendment.
We approve the amendment? You want to, you think that's the way to do it?
I think so.
Okay, I'm.
The motion on the floor was his motion for it as amended, so I think, I think we're good with that. We don't need to do any more voting on it. Roll call.
Well, I think it's a roll call vote here.
Right, right.
Yeah.
All right. Because this is Third and Final, so, we're going to.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Yes.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Baker.
Yes. And I declare that the motion passes. Okay. The next item is council committee reports and council member roundtable. Mr. Martinez, you've got anything for us this evening?
Last night, we had our monthly meeting for the Fremont County School District 25 Rec. Board and we approved two additional persons that applied for money and paid the bills. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock, anything?
I don't have anything tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey?
I did have the pleasure of going to the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting here last week. And they are going to have a quarterly, they're planning on having a quarterly luncheon. This quarter, it will be their awards banquet and I forgot to write down the day, but I don't find it quickly looking, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I just want to, I had the opportunity the last couple weeks to watch a lot of basketball at high school. We had a lot of people in town visiting through people that I knew and stuff like that. I had a lot of people come up to me and compliment me on how well they were treated in Riverton, how much they enjoyed their, their time here and stuff like that. So, I think that goes out to the citizens, just opening up our doors and our businesses and being friendly. Of course, yeah, people are going to complain about, you know, I didn't get this or that, but for the most part, everybody was very happy about the service and the reception they got coming into Riverton, so. Big shout out to the community.
Yes, thank you and thank the community. It was, there were a lot of, a lot of school buses in town. So, if they were full of kids, we had a bunch. So, Mr. Gibbon?
I don't have anything to report on. I just want to say thank you to Courtney for willing to come back and help us out for a little while. I think we all greatly appreciate it and I know that getting through the budget will make it a lot easier with you here, so, thank you so much.
Okay. Ms. Bolander, have you got anything for us this evening?
I certainly do, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve you and to serve the citizens of Riverton. Secondly, the work session that I don't know if you remember the report, there was supposed to be a fiscal health report. That message can change within two weeks, dependent upon the revenues that we receive. So, you wouldn't have wanted that report next time. What we are waiting for is, for instance, let me give you an example. Our sales tax was projected at a certain amount. Seventy-five percent of the year will have gone by by the end of March. As of today, we are at 74.6 percent. That's what we wait for. Timing is everything, especially when it comes to revenues. Expenditures, expenditures look like they are coming under projections, which is good. So, we would like to wait until we have a full nine months, which also helps us with the budget. And we look forward to presenting that report to you in April for the work session. So, Mayor, I think we decided that there will not be a work session next week.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
That's okay with me. Is that okay with everybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody else is nodding their head. They're fine with that, okay?
In front of you tonight is the budget calendar that Mrs. Harris, the Finance Director, worked on today for you. There are three additional meetings on this that we have never had before. And we feel that after several conversations, that we need to make sure that we fully analyze and review and determine how we are sitting with our cash position as it relates to capital projects. So, this year, we added the Budget Planning Workshop for our supervisors and division managers. We added Personnel Planning Meeting and a Capital Project Planning Meeting. It's awfully hard when you put all those subjects together and try to come out with a plan that's, that's good for everyone. So, we also ask that the Finance Committee be a little bit more heavily involved. I think it's awfully important that the mayor be involved this year, especially with the transition of city administrators. So, Mayor, anytime you can attend a meeting, we would be happy to have you. The only thing we have to do is per statutory requirements, watch the quorum. So, we're asking that if you do attend a meeting, to please let Mrs. Harris know so we can get that advertised. And we would love to have you at any time. The last thing I have is to ask Mr. Butterfield to speak briefly about the changes in the recycling effect of April 1st.
Yes. So, as you remember, excuse me, due to some changes with Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District, we removed the drop-off locations around town. When we did that, staff looked at ways to make the curbside program simpler for our, our city members to participate in. And so, a number of months ago, we formed a focus group with diverse members of city staff. From that focus group, we've found a way to, I think, make our curbside program simpler and easier to participate in. Rather than trying to remember which week belonged to which commodity, beginning Monday, April 3rd, public work staff will collect all recyclables during their collection route and we will do recycling every day of the week. We're pretty excited about this. I think that will capture a lot of people that want to recycle but have stopped because the drop-off locations are no longer available. So, we hope that it encourage, that it will encourage people to participate in the curbside program. We are advertising this and we're making sure that our current customers know about the changes. So, flyers are being dropped off throughout this month to current recyclers. There are also informational pamphlets that are available at the utility billing desk. So, we're excited about the change and I hope that it will make our recycling easier for our constituents.
When you say every day of the week, I'm assuming you're not saying I could go put my recycling on Monday and Friday. Is the city going to be divided up in areas where it's going to be certain days that they can drop it off or would it be just every day?
Your Honor, that's a good point. To clarify, the route schedule will stay the same. We will just do it every single week of the month and current recyclers will have their same collection day. They will just be able to put out all recyclables on their collection day rather than one commodity each week.
Okay, so, so, if normally you got picked up on Thursday morning, then it would still be Thursday morning and they're coming by every week, okay? So, if you happen to be gone the second Thursday of the month, on the third Thursday, you could stick it all out there. Wonderful. Isn't that nice? It's great. I think that'll, I think that'll really help and look forward to it. I hope, I hope more people will avail themselves of that. I know there's, you know, for some folks, they thought, well, I just don't have enough stuff to make that work and I save it up a little bit and every other month, I make a run to the, you know, to the bailing station to get rid of it. But it was handy. You didn't have to worry about it too much and that worked out very good. So, I think that's great. Thank you for your efforts there. Mayor's comments? Well, I'm just excited that we've got an interim and I'm glad that it's Courtney. And we look forward to, you know, the budget process and that type of thing. I believe we'll be able to effectively come up with a good budget for the city of Riverton. We've got a couple of really significant projects that are kind of staring us in the face and, and that always causes you some concern about cash flow and that type of thing. And some of those are things that we can control, but, you know, North Federal Highway Reconstruction is really up to the Highway Department. So, we're going to have to struggle our way through that. And it'll take, take a little time and I hope, I hope our Finance Committee will be excited about working on the budget. We're going to try to make that a little more personal to the council this year so that we have an opportunity to be more directly involved in it. From a standpoint, we can learn how it comes together and I think that'll be important. And that's all I have for the evening. And, and I've made it through with only one cough drop. It's not too bad. Thank you. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7:37.